Yeah, don't worry.
Okay, all right. May I have a motion that we discuss only those four, five items? Yeah, five items we went into closed session for. One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, Town Manager Evaluation. One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A6, Investment of Public Funds, Calfie Community and Cultural Center. And three items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, Consideration of the Acquisition Disposition of Real Property, Randolph Avenue, Gatewood Reservoir, and 4000 Block Lee Highway.
So moved.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And then if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Reese and the invocation by Councilman East.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings and ask that you would guide us in all matters. Please grant us wisdom this evening as we conduct the business of our town. In your name we pray, amen.
I'd like to welcome the guests here and online. Modifications to public session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we add an item after Resolution Number Seven, Resolution Twenty, for adding Resolution 2023-11.
And a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll start out with our first, well, our presentation. Chief Joe Neese, the firing range improvements.
That seems a little formal, more of a briefing.
It's because you're formal, that's why.
Obviously. Let me get my stuff aside here. Okay, I'm gonna hand some stuff out.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
There's any other hypothetical areas which Ms. Bertram found very late in the afternoon. I apologize. So, I don't know how much you know about this project, but a couple of years ago, Councilman Ratliff actually brought up the idea of us trying to develop our firing range in some of the property we have up in that area for a regional firearms training facility. We had a couple of meetings with some folks we thought may be interested. I think maybe we had two meetings. They kind of fell to the wayside. There's a lot of projects everybody had going on. I think the ARPA money had been coming in, so it kind of fell to the wayside. But we thought, those were all very good ideas. We just didn't have the opportunity at the time to do anything with it. But with the second round of ARPA, we decided that we were going to try to take some of the ideas he had and do some upgrades to the range that we have. Because that's one thing that a lot of departments don't have is access to their own firing range. They share it a lot. For instance, the Academy, New River Academy, they go to other people's ranges. They go to Pulaski County Sheriff's Office Range. So does a couple of other departments. And so the scheduling can get kind of tight. So we thought, we will put a little bit of money into our range, do some upgrades, because like anything nice, you need to maintain it. And Chief Roach did maintain it quite well. We just didn't have the funds to kind of do some injection into it. And so now we did have the opportunity to look at it. And we've actually, since the shoot house has been built, which is an opportunity for us to clear rooms and do tactical training, building clearing. Since then, we've had a lot of interest in other departments, other agencies, specifically the State Police, the ATF, the DEA, who've been wanting to use that facility, because you can use sim rounds in it. Actually, you can do live fire if you want to. We're not fans of that. It's built to that standard. But we wanted to do just sim rounds, so it's being used quite a bit. When we joined the Academy and realized that they had some issues with maybe the sharing of the firing range, we were like, we've got this range all to ourselves. Now might be the opportunity for us to take some of these funds and really kind of do some upgrades in hopes that we can bring other departments in and have a facility for them. So, this is basically some stuff that we've been going through and trying to upgrade with the existing buildings that we have up there and our existing firing range. So it's not to the standard that you were interested in, unfortunately, but it's more than I've seen in the 25 years I've been here. And I think we're gonna leave the town and the department and the surrounding jurisdictions something to train with and move forward with. So I've got a couple pictures. This might be hard to track unless you're familiar with the range. I know some of you might have been up there. I know Councilman Ratliff has. But we've done some, the first couple pages is kind of just a list of the things we've done, and I can go over that at the end to kind of give you where we are on them. But if you want to look at the first few pictures, we have this one that's got, Nate did this, it's got some blue dots on it and some gray dots. It should give you an overview of what that whole area looks like that we have. You'll see one kind of at the very top of the page. It's got a bunch of little blue dots on it. That's actually our pistol firing range. The two gray little dots behind it are actually electric lights. We have lighting up there so we could do night fire. So, and then the few other buildings you have behind that are a range house where we keep some of our equipment and a little covered area where we can load our firearms, clean our firearms, do some of our work. And then there's a parking lot around there and a couple other things. The other blue dots that you see are on our rifle range. Now, we have a rifle range, which I think it's, you probably know the distance more than I do, but it's significant. You can do qualifications for rifles up to maybe 300 yards. I could be wrong about that number, but the SWAT teams can come and do their sniper rifle qualifications with it, which is pretty exceptional, one of the few people to have that as well. There's no crossfire there. If you go up there and see it, you can see that it lays out. But there's a couple of different levels for that. And the National Guard has been, has used that as well. But there's a dark blue spot over there on just to the far left. That is our shoot house. That's the, it's kind of a, it's kind of a makeshift, typical couple-four room house that you would encounter if we ever had to clear a building, which happens frequently, honestly, on nights, just open doors. We clear buildings all the time. It's a safe way to train. It's a skill set that you have to manage. It's not something you can do one time and do it. So that's why we wanted to do, continue to build these type of facilities so that we could train locally and keep our tactics sharp. So, that's the firing range portion of it. There's a building that has a little red square around it. I don't know if you can see that. It's kind of off to the far right. Can you see, can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Little red square. That is a building that we used in the past for Drug and Narcotics Investigation. Many, many years ago, when I did Drug and Narcotics Investigations, we worked out of this building. We just don't use it anymore. It's been kind of falling into disrepair because we're just not up there. It's another piece of equipment that if you don't maintain it, it's kind of, it's just gonna kind of fall down around you. So, we don't have a classroom up there. So if you wanted to have the Academy come up and do their, their classroom portion of the firing range, they can't do it anywhere. You'd have to do it outside. So what we had asked to do, with Ms. Bertram's help, was look at this and see if we can turn this into a, about a 20-person, about a 20-person training room. So, don't worry, they're still doing Narcotics in town. They're just not doing it there. We're a member of the task force. Things have changed. And this building was just kind of not being used, but it still had a whole lot of potential. So we had some of the guys go up and look at it to see what we could salvage from it. But that's the overlay of it up there. Now, the next picture gives you a little bit of a better idea of what the actual firing range, pistol range, looks like. And that's the one we're really doing the upgrade to. There's a couple of symbols over here, and thank Nate Repass for putting this map together for us. But if you look at that, you'll see where the red dot is, is actually where our targets are. The yellow building is the additional covered canopy we would like to add. The orange one in between it is the one that we already have there. And I don't know the dimensions on it. It's maybe 10 or 12. It's just a covered canopy, like a carport canopy. We have a couple tables underneath it, and we go in there and we'll do our ammo and manipulate our weapons, whatever. But it gets us out of the weather. And then the blue building is actually our range house where we store all of our targets and things of that nature. It's not very big, just a concrete building. All of it has lights. So, you know, you can do the night shooting up there. We also can go up there and pull a car up and do simulated shooting if your vehicle lights are on, which is very distracting. If you've ever seen those lights out at night, it can be very distracting. So we train in that manner as well. So that's actually what the firing range looks like. And there are a couple of things that we're gonna add to that. The, know that the yellow is the addition to it. And then I'm gonna talk to you about the targeting system that would be at the very end of that firing range in just a minute. I took some overall pictures of kind of what the building looks like now. I think the first picture you have, you have a stack of three, is that correct? So picture one for, picture one for you is the actual front of what used to be the building that we did narcotics investigation out of. We have storage up there, different things. So that's what the front of the building looks like right now. And that gravel is probably something that Jerry was backfilling for, so. He does a lot of workforce, Jerry and Chris do a lot of workforce up there. Picture number two is what the right side of the building looks like. And picture number three is the left side of the building. Now, the back of the building is just, is just standard. Now, you can tell it needs probably a few things, cleaning, painting. And we're having windows put in, new windows are being put in. And they're fixing the framing so that it's sealed, because we have a really, really good air and heating and air unit up there. So, you know, we're just gonna run that thing to death if we don't seal it up really good. So, those are the plans that we have for that building. We are gonna do some work on the inside, but for the most part, it's just good to go and it's just cosmetic on the inside. The next picture you have, which would be on the second page, I think it's number four, it looks like this, got it? So, mine's a little bit different. If you want to start at the picture on the bottom up, this is what the actual range house looks like. This is where we just store some of our equipment. This is where we store our targets, our paper, those type of things that you use on the range. That little canopy, can you see that at the bottom on yours?
I think it's, I think it's in the middle on ours.
Well, I may have messed yours up, Council.
Oh, okay, no.
Ah, gotcha. It's a, that's the canopy that we currently have. We're gonna add on to that, so it's gonna extend out a little bit further. So we'll have more room to go in, and each officer may have the opportunity to go in and look at their weapon. And right now, we kind of have to go in in groups of like, three or four, because we have long rifles that we, and when you lay those down on the table, you can only get two or three people up there. So you kind of got people out their cars, trying to load their rounds and stuff for qualifications. So we're hoping to extend that so we can get everyone on the fire line in underneath so that the range masters can watch what they're doing, so that we can check their equipment, because they do check the firearms before they qualify. So that's an addition. We're wanting to add a covered carport addition to that. That was the yellow piece that you saw on there. One of the next pictures would be just the front of the range house. It looks pretty rough. It really is just that it's kind of muddy and grassy up there. So we're gonna clean it, we're gonna paint it. But for the most part, structurally, that's in great shape. Lighting's good, everything's good on the inside. We might do some organization of it, clean out some old product, but for the most part, we're just gonna clean that up. The next picture is just of the grass. That would be you standing in front of the range house, looking down, downrange. You'll see the two poles, there are two AEP poles with electricity attached to it. One thing we're hoping, if you can see in your picture, you'll see that there's no targets up. I don't know if you can see that in yours, but there are no targets up, because we've removed the wood and wire system, targeting system that we had. It was just on two-by-fours. We slid it, you put your target in there, it shot. Well, we shot it, you know, shot all the wood up. We were having to replace the wood a lot. So, we had looked into what kind of targeting systems that we might be able to go to, that we could afford. And there's a metal targeting system that we're looking at going to. And I'll go into more, a little bit more, I'll go into a little bit more detail, but if you really want to know the ins and outs, Lieutenant Parmley and Lieutenant Saul, who are firearms instructors, kind of really researched this to see what would be best, what we could get, the best product for our money and what would last us, what would be longevity for us. So, that, those three pages that I gave you to begin with are just kind of a rundown of what we're doing. We had Jerry go up and look at the old narcotics building to see what we could do, if there were any other structural issues that we had with it. He, I was very concerned that the roof might be a problem, but the roof is good. The chimney needs to be fixed a little bit. And there might be some caulking that needs to be fixed to seal it up. So, all in all, the building in itself is in great shape. We just have to do a little bit of cosmetic work to the inside of it, mainly to seal it off, because we, I feel like we had some airflow issues in there. They suggested some spray foam sealant and some things of that nature. The biggest thing, I think, the biggest upgrade to that is the windows. I think that's gonna make a big difference in sealing it, because we had had that issue for a long time. I don't know if it's the weather, or what, or the age, or just we haven't maintained it the way we needed to. But we're putting new windows into it, and you can see the quote there. And we have one window that they haven't finished, and they're having to refit some of the framing so that it seals better. So the windows are almost done already. We don't know about insulation in the attic, we're gonna look at that later. It may be that the windows would be the, and then the new foam sealant might be an issue, might solve any issues of insulation that we might have. There were a few things that we needed to add if we were gonna turn it into a training room, refrigerator, a microwave if you had lunch, because usually they're up there all day, like 10, 12 hours. Couple of TVs, so you could do PowerPoints, that's how they do it these days. And a couple HDMI cables, a few tables, shop vac to keep it clean, and some chairs. So as of, I guess, the end of January, our tables and our chairs and the refrigerator, shop vac, all those things are in. We just need to get the setup and let the IT guys come up and look at how we're gonna do the HDMI cables and the TVs. I don't think that's gonna be an issue. That's probably the last thing we do up there. As far as plumbing, everything's great. Actually has a shower in there, in case you need to shower off from lead. Lead exposure is an issue now. So we have a, kind of a full kitchenette in there. You can wash and clean your hands, or you can go in the shower if you get exposed to a lot of lead. Sometimes lead, you can get peppered in the face with lead, and it's a lot. You can wash your face off, flush your eyes out, if you guys didn't know that. Lead decontamination is important on a range. So, you do have those facilities, which is a plus. Not everybody has that. There, it's just got a lot of old equipment up there, a lot of chairs and just old boxes, couple of storage rooms, we're gonna go up in there and clean that out. There was also an area around there that had some old, just, I guess, just old construction equipment from the town. It was kind of a catch-all up there for like, concrete barriers and fencing. And Chris Phillips met with us and went up there, and actually Nate met with us as well. They went up there and looked at all that stuff, and it turns out, some of that can be salvaged and used on other projects that the town has going on. And some of it probably needs to be either trashed or sold off. But they're gonna clean all that out and clean that area up. And some of these other projects that Nate and them are working on, they might be able to use some of the equipment up there that's been just stored up there out in the, it's just out in the elements. We haven't gotten too far on that, because the ground is really soft up there. It holds water quite a bit, and we couldn't get the big pieces of equipment up there to do some of the cleaning, so I really can't show you a really fabulous cleaned-off area. But as soon as the weather comes in, I think Chris and them will really be able to clean that area off. They just can't get the heavy equipment in, it starts to sink, so. To the range itself, which is what I know you're probably interested in. The metal targeting system is steel-framed. You'll hold, it'll hold, be held by two-by-four, so you can switch it out to whatever size target that you need. And it's gonna be a concrete slab. And we're going with, I think, a filament concrete that's very durable. We haven't been able to pour that. They've already dug it out and removed everything off the back of the range, ready to go, but it's just been too, can't get the concrete truck up there, it's just too soft. Because they're gonna have to drive across our range to fill it in, because it's on the actual backside, there's like a tunnel back there. They've ditched it out and the targets will come up behind it. So, but we've already talked to the company and got that, you know, we've already got that quoted out and everything. We're just waiting to get that taken care of. Jerry's been heading that and doing a great job. The last thing I heard was that the targets actually came in, under quote, $2,400. I thought it was gonna be a lot more expensive than that. So, a really great quote, we should have those targets soon. We just talked to that company and they're powder finishing them, but we're gonna fill them in on the inside. So, I don't know why. I will not pretend to know why we're filling those in, but it has something to do with the longevity of the steel. And if you would like, when we get more of this done, if you'd like the firearms instructors to come up and talk to you about why some of these things are more important and what the longevity of these pieces of equipment are, I think that would probably be better for you, but I'm just giving you the briefing on what we're doing now.
I think you're probably gonna wanna take a tour when you're complete.
Oh, please, yes, yes. We're, I mean, we're really excited about it, to be honest with you. We're just kind of waiting the rain out, you know, they're ready to go, but we've been waiting the rain out. We're gonna add two more AEP poles. Well, I'm not gonna, I don't know if from AEP, but there'll be two light poles. So we have a two, probably what's considered the 25-yard line. It's a 50-yard line pistol range. We have two at the 25. It goes from 50, 25, 15 to 7. We're probably gonna add two more around the 15 to 7 yard line so it can light up for closer contact, for closer contact shooting. And we are going to mount basically a, a blue light from a vehicle on it. We had one given to us by a company. So it can mimic what it would be like if we're out at night, having to engage someone in your lights behind you. It can be very disorienting. So we shoot like that now, we just pull a car onto the range. Now we'll have the ability to have that on the poles and not have to drive on our range. So, I, I think it's gonna light it up quite a bit, and I think it will add to the types of training that we can do up there if it's lit better. I know that you had talked about having lighting up there, and so we're addressing that. We do have to replace one, there's apparently, a bird has damaged one of those poles really badly, and we didn't realize that. So, we're adding the two and replacing one. So one of those would be a replacement to the pole that we have. The canopy we've talked about, that quote came in around 2,200. We can't get that done until we have the concrete for, because the truck can't, can't make it through there. Let's see. There is a couple cattle gates that we're not using up there, and we thought that we might relocate those to, because we know that Nate's doing some work on some of the land up there with some of the bike trails. And we want to make sure that folks know exactly where our, where our trading area starts. So we're looking at removing maybe some of the cattle gates that we currently have that really aren't being closed, like going up to the, going up to the rifle range was a cattle gate that's never closed. So we're looking at relocating that and closing it off so that that area where we do firearms training is, is, is very identifiable. And Nate's been working on that with us, with the cattle guard and with signage. So that's another, just a safety issue. I mean, probably should have done that a long time ago. I don't know why we didn't. We also are probably gonna install some type of security system up there so we can keep an eye on your investment. So, I know that was kind of brief, and we haven't been able to do a whole lot, but that's our plan, that's our plan. I think we can do all of it in the budget that we've been given. And honestly, I think with the folks that have showed interest in what we have now, I, I just, I just think that can, it can only grow. We've had a lot of other departments come up and use our facilities. And we want to kind of, well, we want to kind of put a good face on for them, so.
Just a couple things for you. You know, when we set out to bring a good, young chief in to younger than I am, you're not much of him, but you are.
That's not much.
Anyway, but we set out to, to change the whole dimension of our police department. You've done an outstanding job of retaining, getting the pay, getting equipment, the full-weller. Well, people really don't understand, that is a recruitment tools. And a fine range is well worth any amount of money that we sink in this thing, because it only takes one life. You can build several ranges. One mistake, you can build several ranges, you just watch. So, when, one of the things I talked about a couple of years ago is this, is this, is this gonna be money well spent? When you build it, build it the way you want it for 20 years from now, 25 years, you and I probably won't be around to worry about it, but you might be, I don't know.
I don't know. At this rate, I don't know.
I think you've done a great job, you know, this is one part, I just don't want to cut many corners. If it's, let's make, let's make it, this end of Virginia's, number one, you got room to build, you got room to grow. And as we all, like I said, as we all know, training is 100% of your lifestyle. And when it's all said and done, I want to nominate Councilman Reese to go up, when we all go up, to be tased and peppered.
Oh, my.
Why am I getting nominated?
Well, we want, I want to make sure it works.
We do have taser training tomorrow, if you'd like.
That's right.
Oh, I, I think, I'm, I'm busy, but I think Mr. Ratliff's ready.
I have accidentally, accidentally electrocuted myself several times, so I don't think I need to be tased.
I think this is wonderful.
Well, it's, I, I, I mean, I, honestly, when Ms. Bertram said, "Let's find some projects that we can really look into going forward, that has some, some future to it," I can't take any credit for this. This is all, this is all the people down there, because they recognize that this is training that, first of all, they recognize that we have a fabulous opportunity and potential up there in that piece of land.
Right.
And putting money into that and putting, putting better equipment and a better training facility out, turns out a better product. And it, it, I did not realize that not everybody had access to this. I'm just living over here in our own firing, I mean, I've only ever worked here. So I didn't know that this was a struggle for other departments, and I didn't realize that that was a real issue. And so when I went to the Academy and we were talking to them, I was like, "You guys are coming to our range?" I mean, what, come to our range? Why are you not coming to our range? And so when she said, "Hey, you need, you've got some money, let's look at this," started talking to the folks downstairs, and they were like, "We just, we really need to put some money into the range." So, this is all them. Clearly, I can't answer half your questions, because I don't know anything about firing range, but, but it is an investment. And I do, you know, I do know the buildings, and I have been here for, you know, 25 years. And I have seen that we haven't maintained it as well as we should have. And it, it does have a lot of potential. It has a lot of potential to be a training facility for not only the police department, but you know, our fire services up there as well. They have a tower up there, and they do a lot of training up there. And I just don't know the type of facilities that the southwest region has for departments that are even smaller than us. So, I hope that, that we get everything, every dime, every penny we can get out of this, and it's, it's great work, and I hope that they do it.
Under one reef, you have the fire department training, and you have our training, police department training. And as I wish, hoping in the future, that, that our citizens eventually down the road can have somewhere under command to go shoot. That, that is a very popular thing, so.
You're not wrong.
Now, I want to ask, you was talking about the targets, and I, I see, you was talking about, are you talking about turn targets, pop-up targets?
I don't know if they turn, they might be, they might be the static ones. I'm not 100% sure. Unfortunately, I was supposed to present this to you guys a couple of weeks ago, and I couldn't. And I had the guys lined up for it, and they've had, they've had other commitments. But if we can meet again in a, in a couple of weeks, when we have some more work done, I can have them answer all the questions as to why they went with this targeting system and what, what the product is, because they did research it, they put some research into it.
I mean, I'll go out on a limb, and I'll be first to nominate these other five if they don't come in time to come up and hold targets up. I will let, I will nominate this right now, just.
Well, I will tell you exactly who you should have on the other side of that line, and it would not be me. So, but we have some fabulous, we have some, some folks that are so, so good with this and train a lot, and, and, and you're right. I mean, you know, it'd be great to have our firearms instructors be able to interact with other departments if they don't have that there, and/or, you know, if you ever have your citizen facility. But it's definitely an investment that maybe wasn't the first thing on our mind, but we, we've really put some work into it, and, and Ms. Bertram has been 100% behind it. And, and Ms. Bertram has been 100% behind it. And honestly, everybody at Town Shop, it's been great.
Is this gonna be ready for y'all's spring qualifying?
Well, it has to be, so. Yeah. It, it, I mean, the rain's messing us up a little bit, uh, but I think the last thing we might be getting in is, is the targeting system because of the ground. But they've promised me as soon as the ground gets hard enough to hold that equipment, that they're gonna get it started. But yes, the plan is, and I think we qualify in May. I think we pushed it back one month, just to make sure it gave some room.
Y'all qualify.
Oh, okay.
See the rain is part of it. I don't-
Yeah, absolutely. I'd love for you guys to take a tour. Yes, please do. I mean, they've put a lot, they've, it's been maintained over the years, but this is gonna be something that I think all the folks down there are not only gonna be proud of, but also they're, they're gonna be very excited about having this facility that they can use whenever they need to.
Jill's presentation has demonstrated to you all what I have said on a number of occasions about how the people on your staff here work together to make things happen. She's mentioned our parks and, uh, our outdoor facilities coordinator. She's mentioned our public works people. The involvement of her staff in actually formulating this proposal. These are the kinds of things that make, I think, our organization unique, and the things that we can build upon. And this particular facility that we want to make available once it's complete to other jurisdictions, probably having them pay something toward maintenance. But that helps to put this town on the map, too, to be able to say, we have these kinds of facilities.
But it's, it's cheap, it's cheaper to pay to use that range than it is to have to build and maintain a range, so.
There's a lot that gets into it.
What you're doing is, even at whatever, I don't know what's Bryce Bebe, I mean, you've got a lot of facilities that would use it, a lot.
A lot of potential up there, and I do, I do think so. We've already seen an increase in people being interested in, in, in the few things that we've done over the years. So I think this would only be, bring, draw more.
So is the academy already aware of the improvements to allow for classroom settings?
I talked briefly with Captain Thacker about that. We haven't had, we haven't really sat down and had any kind of, he does the main training up there. We haven't really talked to him about the improvements, but I told him that we were looking at doing something up there. But if they ever had a conflict on the schedule where they needed to get anyone at, to the range to be qualified for any reason, no matter who it is, a jail or whoever, all they had to do was reach out to our training coordinator, Lieutenant Parmley, and he'd make it happen. And I was just, just this week, I saw three people are already using our range. We have our K-9 training group that uses it on the regular. They do tracking up there. It's another, it's a lot of land. They do a lot of tracking. Those folks also don't have anywhere to train. But state police has been up there, and I think the National Guard's up there this weekend. So it's being used quite frequently.
Is it, um, is it possible for a facility like that to be used for, like, public gun safety training classes or courses or things of that nature?
So when Councilman Ratcliffe brought it, this conversation up, it was looking towards something of a, of a, either a public range or a public slash regional training facility, where you would have both, like, maybe something that's run by a police department or a conglomerate or regional group. And then you would have classes or range time for citizens on the side. But we really couldn't, we really didn't get a lot of traction with that with the other regional groups that we, or, I guess, people who may have been interested in it. But really, it was, it was kind of his idea, let's, let's look at this, because there's so much potential.
Maybe not on such a larger scale as maybe that conversation, but on a, a smaller scale of a, you know, a, once a year, ran by us or coordinated with someone else that we're gonna offer, you know, this ability for the public, you know, from a training standpoint or something. I think a twofold relationship building, you know, with the community and if it benefits.
I know that there's been a lot of interest from the public in that. We have had folks contact us and ask, where might I go? You know, I, you know, I have this weapons permit. I have a concealed weapons permit, but I don't have anywhere to actually, you know, shoot my gun or become more comfortable with it or get some other training other than whatever class is. And, you know, we've referred them to a few people, but I think that was one of the reasons why he wanted to bring this up, because there is a need for that. I don't know what that looks like for the town. I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's a lot of it.
I'm a little bit surprised, and in fact, it came up at the one of the two, couple meetings that we had, where we were talking recently, that there has not been interest in the private sector to develop some type of a range. There is a place in Roanoke that I'm familiar with that has a lot of people who go to it. But given the interest in the outdoors and in guns and in hunting in this part of the state, you would think that that might be an opportunity. And I know one of the members of the group is supposed to investigate whether or not either the gentleman that was in Roanoke or some other person might be interested in starting a small activity for the public. But I think what our primary responsibility or first responsibility is, is to make sure that our law enforcement folks are well-trained. And then we have to see how that would fit with bringing in the public. But we can certainly take a look at that, and I would encourage you all, once we finish the improvements there, to have a guided tour of what is there and what is planned, 'cause I'm not sure that many of you have kind of seen all of the different things that we have going on, on that very large piece of property.
Thank you.
So it sounds like a field trip, and we can come in early, and then Darlene likes us better when we get here early. Yeah, we're happier.
They really are. I mean, today, they were here early again. I don't know what-
And if you feed us, we'll even be more happy. Just saying.
Said there was a microwave.
You have a microwave and a refrigerator, brand new.
Thank you, Gee.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2023-10, appropriation of funds. That would be appropriate the funds from the general fund unrestricted account to the restricted fund account for U-DAG. Someone make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for us to approve Resolution 2023-10, appropriation of funds from the general fund unrestricted account to the restricted fund account for U-DAG.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And then Resolution 2023-11, community project funding request to the House Committee on Appropriations.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might just give a little bit of background, because this is an add-on to your agenda. We received correspondence, uh, the end of last week from Congressman Griffith's office that indicated the possibility of communities applying to the House Appropriations Committee for some special community funding. It has a very short timeline. The applications are actually due on the 20th of March. And we are scrambling to put together what we hope is a very effective application to seek money for replacement of some of our major water lines. And I think everybody's familiar with the fact that our water system is 100-plus years old, and we have a number of areas that are sorely in need of a total replacement, that repair is not the practical solution. And so with your permission, I've added this item, because the representative from Congressman Griffith's office indicated that the more letters of support that we can get from the community and from governing bodies, the more attractive our proposal would be. So right now, we're still working on what the amount of funding would be that we're gonna ask for. But I think all of you are well-aware of the condition of our water system. And we certainly have folks in our community all the time that are complaining, can't we spend more money on replacing water lines? And this is an opportunity to do that on some other taxpayers' money. So hopefully, you all will support this, and we will be contacting other groups and individuals to write resolutions of support or letters of support.
Do we have any idea what the potential funding amount would be?
They have not put a dollar figure out there. They have made a list of the types of projects, and clearly, all of them are oriented toward infrastructure. Some related to roads, others to trains and railroads. When I talked to the congressman's representative about this matter today, which is why this is late, he suggested a resolution from the council. He said that he thought the fact of the age of our system and the fact that we had evidence of repairs that were needed, that it should be a good candidate. But we're still trying to put together the dollar figures, and we'll always ask for and probably get less than we ask for. But if we have an opportunity to get any money toward replacement, it's to our advantage.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2023-11 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Moving on, we'll be at the public comment period. I don't have any public comment forums. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. If you will look over, if you've had a moment to look over the February 21st, 2023 minutes, and someone make a motion to accept them, please.
I move with approved February 21st, 2023 minutes as written.
Second.
And a roll call for that, please.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And now we'll move to the council comments. So, Mr. East, do you have anything?
I don't have anything this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson?
I was just gonna ask, and it may already be in manager's report, but in case it wasn't, just for an update on the Main Street project, just 'cause that's a commonly asked question. Okay, well, we'll just defer to that one with them. That's all I have.
Mr. Ratcliffe?
Uh, I'm pretty happy.
You didn't, you didn't say anything last time either.
Grass hasn't started growing yet.
No, I don't, thank, thank.
All right. Mr. Clontz?
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Reese?
I just wanted to say thank you for changing the traffic on Third Street coming from the, the Y intersection. It, I cross, I drive Madison across there twice a day usually, and I have always, I have often worried that I'm about to be T-boned by somebody 'cause I can't see past the building. And now that they're only on the far lane, I can always see them, and it's just made it so much better. So thank you so much for that, because it's made, just one less thing I stress about during the day, which is great. Although, since the chief is here, I have now almost been T-boned twice at Madison by people running that intersection. I don't know if that's a, you know, obviously, people, Madison and Fifth Street, I'm sorry, I should say that more specifically. And I don't know if there's a camera on that or something, or if we could just look at that. 'Cause if, if it's happening to me, then it's possibly happening to other people. And I think, I don't know if it's just people are distracted or something, but I really like-
Light.
At the light, yeah. People just, on Fifth Street, just, I don't know if they're just not paying attention or something like that, but.
You need a four-way stop is what you need.
Well, and- Well, and I, I have to say, since I do walk through downtown, I have noticed it's very nice that everybody stops now. I think people are really getting into the flow of things, and it's been, it's been nice. But if something could be done, that'd be, I don't know what it is, just maybe have a patrol car sit there a couple of times, just remind people to, thank you.
I would think the mayor's cellphone is ringing off the hook as we speak.
Not yet, but I'm sure Facebook will liven up.
Give it a minute.
I noticed they fixed a hole next to the, the now four-way, or, well, three-way stop sign right now on Washington and Main. And I appreciate that. I know that people were, but it'll get there. It's getting there. So now it's time for the manager's report, so here's your time.
First of all, I want to kind of build on Mr. Reese's comments to say that I have observed quite a bit recently the change that we've made on Third Street. And every day, more and more people are adhering to the stop signs. First couple of days, people were obviously running them, but I think people are getting the hang of it and are able to actually move through the intersection faster than when there were the lights, because you had to wait for the lights to change. And I've actually had that feedback from some folks. We will be, at some point in the near future, opening up the opposite lane, traveling from west to east on Third. But in order to do that, we will need to have someone come in and do striping of the street, which we will carry all the way through in front of the county administration building, so that we have a uniform pattern there. And we will announce probably a week to two weeks in advance when that move is made. But we think that the way the traffic is flowing now, it's going very, very well. As to Mr. Dawson's request for an update on West Main, all of the laterals that we talked about, three on each side, in order to get sprinkler capacity to both sides of the street, have been installed. So they are now available for connections if and when a business wants to add that. They are in the process as we speak. They started today. We'll be back the rest of the week to install the individual connections to the new water main, to the actual individual properties. And during that process, we asked the property owners if they wanted additional meters added, because this would be the time to do it, where you wouldn't have to tear up the street or the sidewalks further. And we have gotten about four additional meters requested, and they're being put in. We also have the new project, 67, 69, and 73. Two of those buildings, 67 and 69, were formerly in the ownership of the Housing Authority. And we have the final plans for that set of buildings. They will be putting in eight apartments and three retail spaces. And we have gotten the size of those spaces, and I've turned them over to Mike Haskins, our economic development person, because he's out there, very eager, hitting the bushes for new businesses to come to the downtown. I would say we're still on schedule. I can't say today that we're ahead of schedule, but certainly should be able to accomplish that transition within the period of time of the contract. Again, I have to remind people that just because you have a contract doesn't mean that the person is committed to being there every day. In fact, they have multiple contracts, and so they work back and forth. But we were told they would be in today, and they were, and the schedule calls for them to be in, hopefully, the rest of this week. So we are proceeding. I just wanna remind people that when we open that street back up, we'll open one lane in one direction, just as we did with Third, go through a transition period, and then open up the second one. And that particular block will be gravelled. It won't be paved, because we want to get the curb gutter and sidewalk and streetscape work done before that happens. And we do plan to have at your next meeting the designs for the streetscape for you all to see. They gave us some very technical-looking drawings, and you'd have to have a microscope to look at some of the little comments to know what they were. And we said, we need something that needs to be more like a picture of what's happening. And so that's being prepared as we speak, and you will see it at your next meeting. I wanna mention that back in, I think it was January, I asked you all for permission to go ahead and order in advance, because there was a two, a two-and-a-half-year delivery time, a replacement engine for the fire department. The estimate at that time was $900,000. And I'm unfortunately having to tell you that that price is now going to be $998,000, almost $100,000 more. And so I'm going to tomorrow sign that before it goes up anymore. You'll recall that we still have a couple of years to work out the financing of that, looking for grants and other kinds of options. But we do need to go ahead and order that as soon as possible. But I did not wanna order it until I let you all know of that price increase. And I did want to report to you all that we have filled the building official position. A gentleman by the name of Tim Hale. We have multiple Hales now. Ran into a snafu on email yesterday, because our new building official's name is Tim Hale. And we have Terry Hale, who's on our planning commission and Housing Authority, who has an email address. And then we have Olivia Hale, so.
Many Hales.
We have too many Hales. We want to keep them all, so we'll figure out a way to identify folks. But Tim is working with us part-time this month, but he will come on full-time 1st of April. And in the meantime, while he's part-time, Tim Nestor, who I reported to you all, is the retired Radford Building Official. He's continuing to work part-time with Tim and getting him acclimated, so we feel very good about that. Every time we fill a position, it seems like we have another one that needs to be filled. But we continue, I think, to plug along and get as much done as we possibly can with the manpower that we have. And I do want to just mention that contrary to what people post on Facebook about me or about the town, a lot of it's not true. And I'm still here today, and I plan to continue to be here, at least until my contract ends. So please find something else to complain about on Facebook other than my status.
Something on the internet's not true? It's rocked my world.
In fact, somebody sent me a copy of it and said, and you didn't bother to tell your staff. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, just a reminder, our next council meeting will be March 21st, 2023. Close session at 6:00. Open session begins at 7:00. So I have nothing else on the agenda. I declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.